Absolutely.
Good evening. I call the Board of Selectmen's Meeting for January 9th, 2023 to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment announcement.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Richard Waystack from Harwich. I would like to announce and to invite you, Mr. Powers and our new housing advocate, Ms. Nickerson, to a Harwich Housing Huddle. Say that three times fast. To be held Wednesday, February 1st at 8:30 a.m. at 204 Sisson Library. The Harwich Housing Huddle is a follow-up to the very successful housing summit that was held last month in Hyannis. We're being assisted by the folks at Hack. And really what we'll talk about is education and training for housing advocates in our community. Training people to speak at a selectman's meeting, at a planning board meeting, at a Board of Appeals meeting, at town meeting, to help participate in the decisions that are being made about housing in our community. Our friend and fellow Harwich resident Matt Pitta will be emceeing the event. And all are welcome, and we will be extending invitations to our housing trust, our housing committee, our housing authority, and any and all interested in housing in this community. Thank you.
Richard, could you give the time and date again? The date and...
That is Wednesday, February 1st at 8:30 a.m., and I will provide coffee.
I had the same question. Thanks.
Anyone else for public comment announcement? Mary, do you want to do the vacancies?
Sure. Our committee vacancies are as follows. Agriculture four, capital outlay two, community center facilities one, conservation one, forest three, culture one, energy and climate action two, historic district three, planning board one, real estate and open space one, treasure chest one, voter information three, youth services two, and zoning one. And again, a reminder, even if it's not on the list, if you're interested, put your name in the hat, because we don't advertise necessarily. If we've already got some people interested, we're going to interview them and hire someone. So any committee that you're interested in, please put in an application.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else for public comment? I get a motion agenda?
I move that we vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from December 19th, 2022.
Second.
I do have one correction, though. The section where we're talking about the MDR, which was the ever-source spraying into the trees, the Paradise Charles said, I stated that he, Valentine said that he wants to support the letter, and I did not support the letter.
Oh, right.
Joe, can we have that removed?
What was the page reference?
The page is four of the minutes.
Thank you.
It says, I say that I want, he wants to support the letter. I may have said I wanted to support it, but I can't. I may have said something like that, but...
Very good.
So the motion is to approve that modification. And it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, Joe. New business discussion on free cash certification and financial status. Joe, I'm going to have you open this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we've already begun the process for fiscal year 2024, with annual town meeting 112 days away, there has been obvious and considerable interest in free cash, given the eye-popping numbers that we received. I will sort of jump to the conclusion somewhat to say that we, the town of Harwich, are not alone in seeing those large numbers. But before we get to my material, we have our finance director, town accountant, who can walk us through the history of it and I believe some of the machinations that go to how it is actually calculated.
Thank you, Joe. Emery, there's been a lot of questions on how we got to seven and a half million. This is our third conversation on free cash, and thank you for all the work that you did explaining it in English. It's the best way I can say it without looking at the dreaded reports that some people cannot read. So I think the public will appreciate this, and I certainly appreciate it.
Well, thank you for having me, and hopefully we can solve some of that. The first item that I wanted to address was your free cash certified history, and this chart is from FY 13 to FY 22. And I just want to point out that from FY 19 down to FY 20, we reduced our free cash by $2,45,959. And as we all are aware, that was the beginning of the COVID, global economic hit. And then in FY 21, you had a certified free cash of $6,302,898, which was a large jump. Again, the impacts of COVID and the economy. So that increase was $4,856,783,000, uh, $83, excuse me. So then finally, for FY 22, our certified free cash became $7,488,155, which was an increase over the last year's jump of $1,185,257. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there so that people know how it ebbs and flows, and it's due to the economy in general. The next couple of reports I had given you were the history of the actual receipts versus the historical receipts from the tax recap. The tax recap are inclusive of how we get to our tax rate. I additionally gave you a handout of the undesignated fund balance and how we get to free cash. So basically, the undesignated fund balance is everything we've accumulated in our general fund. So they take the DOR, takes the prior year undesignated fund balance, which at that time was $7,475,517, and then we add and subtract different items, and then we get down to our current year undesignated fund balance. So things like our FY 22 revenues are added in, which were $73 million. Expenditures come out of that, $73 million as well. Add back in our prior year reserve for articles. Those are the monies that we've set aside for the articles that are already approved and we're going to continue with. So that was 1.5 million. The prior year reserve for free cash that was voted was 3.8 million. And then the prior year reserve for encumbrances, that's like purchase orders, things that we know we're going to be spending that we've already started spending on, $600,712. And that was the previous year. Now you start subtracting out your current year, which was the FY 22. And again, it's a reduction of your current year reserve for the articles, the current year expenditures, that's the free cash that you voted or was voted, and current year reserve for encumbrances. Then because of our reporting, there are late adjustments. So there was a correction to the way the sale of land was reported. So that changed, and it was transferred to a sinking fund. So it came out of your cash. And then a late adjustment to a playground expenditure. And that's, all those totals, as you can see, come down to $8,685,964, and that was our ending current year undesignated fund balance. That's what we're starting FY 23 with. So then to get to your free cash, again, DOR makes additional adjustments by taking out personal property tax receivables, real estate tax receivables, general fund tax liens, and deferred real and personal properties. Then we deduct some shortages that we had had that we recorded in FY 22. And you can see there, there was a small balance for access for library, the capital fund for harbor, bulk fuel, traffic enforcement, police extra duty, and FEMA fire grant. And that's how they came up with the $7.488 million of our free cash. And I'd also like to add that on the FEMA that hit, the reduction of free cash of $184,000 was because the receipts were posted to the wrong federal grant. So those will be corrected in FY 23.
Thank you. Start with questions from the board before we go on. Back to the town administrator, Julie.
No, I mean, that's a good accounting of it, and it spells it out more clearly. I guess the main question is, where do we go from here? So thank you.
Mary?
You know, obviously, I can follow the math. I don't pretend to understand each of those funds. What do you think is an appropriate level of free cash?
Well, your free cash policy speaks to a percentage of our general fund.
Okay.
Everybody agrees, and by everybody, I mean auditors to DLR, DLS, Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, agrees that there should be some sort of free cash carried forward. And that's up to each individual town as to how much they want to do that, because you want to have some funds carrying forward for one-time capital expenditures or putting funds away for OPEB or the stabilization account for rainy day funds for the town.
And there's also, you know, in budgeting, you know, I remember a guy I worked for said, "A lot of it is science, but some of it's an art. You've got to budget carefully for the unforeseen." So there's going to be some piece of that, that you want to be a little bit conservative in your estimates of revenue, so that you're not in the hole. I would think that's true in municipal work as well.
Yes.
Do you feel that this would be looked upon negatively by the state? Or I know when our auditor was here, was that last summer? The comment was that we were okay.
Yeah, again, every town should have some means of cash that they can carry over to do other projects that they don't have to go out to borrow for, because essentially that's putting on a debt later on to the taxpayer. So again, it's a matter of budgeting your receipts, your receivables, your estimated receipts, and how conservative you want to be on that.
Right. Thank you.
Mary?
Thank you, Michael. Good questions and good response. Thanks for the detailed information. To your point, Mary, I'm not one, we seem to have this discussion about free cash is bad, that we haven't budgeted correctly. And I'm not in that school. I think free cash, at least to some extent, is very good, because as you said, allows us to spend the following year without borrowing. I think what this does for me, though, is it helps detail where that money came from and where it went. Because one issue, when we had, like this year, a large amount of free cash, it doesn't get the same scrutiny in the public as an override would, for instance. So we have to be careful, and this helps us do that, explain it. But, you know, I'm not one, again, I'm not one to say, I'm for free cash, at least to some extent.
To some extent, yes.
Thank you. There's some reoccurring adjustments in here, DPW being one of them, dump operation. And I notice we're having more and more and larger bounce transfers at the end of the year. Is there a reason why that we wouldn't be more aggressive on revenue coming into the dump based on what you're looking at?
We can certainly look at it and raise the estimated revenues for next year.
Thank you. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you to the members for your comments and questions. Selectman Ballantyne, I enjoy yours the most. I wrote down that your comment was, you're not in the free cash is bad school, and I'd like to join you in that school as well. And of course, thanks to Emery, our finance director, for this prep work, which is something that she does as a habit and an occupation, and it's something that she and I dive into and talk about, not just on free cash, but everything related to the budget. In anticipation of this and knowing the sort of materials that Ms. Ellis was going to bring forward, I did a little bit on my end. We sort of coordinated, meaning I was going to talk about some of our peers. And so for me, the peer group that I used, obviously, is Cape Cod. But I did sneak off Cape, so to speak, and also looked at similar communities. And I stopped that only because I was looking at communities that had our population plus or minus 3,000, and I thought that was a little bit arbitrary. So when I narrowed it, whether it was Cape Cod towns, which I'll talk about in a moment, or towns that are very close to our size and of a similar type, meaning maybe a resort town like we are, or have, you know, I think some extraordinary things that bring people to their town, because that impacts upon our revenue, I was struck by the fact of how, what I would say, how normal we are in Harwich relative to the information that's available from the Division of Local Services. So you folks had asked the question, and Emery has done a great job, because I was going to cheat and read it from the DLS primer. But they do talk about, and the line that I have always been mindful of, is as a non-reoccurring revenue source, free cash should be restricted to paying one-time expenditures, funding capital projects, or replenishing other reserves. That's what this town has done. That's something that Emery's predecessor, Carol, and I have done, and it's something that Emery and I will do going forward. We have not, do not, and will not rely upon free cash to prop up the operating budget. It's a very bad practice, and it's just masking something bigger that may be out there. But within the DLS primer, within your policy that you and predecessor boards have identified, and as Emery has answered, you know, the question is, how much will you want to have it relative to your overall operating budget? So for that, there are three statistics that I wanted to put out there, and this is something, Mr. Chairman, that I can add to the record and share with you all. But if you look at fiscal year 23, because that's the number we're dealing with this evening, that is the number that has set the record, if you will, for Harwich. Right now, amongst the 15 communities on Cape Cod, only nine of us, or at least nine of us perhaps, is another way to say it, as of today, have certified free cash for fiscal year 23. So it's not the complete picture yet. But in every instance, we see either a town that's had their largest number ever, or they're coming off of last year for them was their largest number ever. But there's some significant distance as far as growth, meaning significant percentages in growth. Through it all, however, for the communities that have certified free cash for fiscal year 23, we are sixth out of nine. So we're in the bottom half, bottom third of the group there as far as our percentage for the budget. So we come in at under 10%. The first five are well over 10%, and in some cases are even trending almost towards 15% of their operating budget. So again, it is relative to the community, each community, but we have not crossed that threshold where we've hit 10% of our operating budget. When you look at the dollar amount that came in, we are sixth out of ninth. But again, that can also be relative to the size of the other communities. And when you look at the percentage change year over year, we are fourth out of nine. So yes, we saw growth, but when you look at the other communities, so our growth, we went from 15% growth in free cash year over year, and then that year to this year, 18%. There were communities last year where we were 15% year-over-year growth that were in the 30s and 40%. Several communities doubled. So we haven't seen exponential growth relative to our peers. What we're seeing is relative to everybody else, where we usually end up, the middle or the back of the pack as far as being more conservative. So that was fiscal year 23. So we come sixth out of ninth, when it's percentage of budget, and we're under 10%. 9.69% to be exact. In fiscal year 22, 14 of the 15 towns, the outlier for the last two years is Wealth Fleet, so they're not factored into this equation. But in fiscal year 22, we were 11th out of 14 as far as relative to our overall budget. So we're not in that top group, and the problem that I think people are envisioning, I don't think is there based on that analysis. Now, having said all of that, as we, as some of your questions have gotten to this evening, so we have this amount of free cash, the question remains, how are we going to use it? And so Emery and I have talked, and I certainly already have recommendations relative to the budget itself, and we'll get into those, I think, as early as next week. You said, Mr. Chairman. But we are not and have never relied upon this for the operating budget. So we are meeting, I think to an earlier question, we are meeting what auditors and sound financial practices dictate.
Thank you, Joe. Julie?
No, I mean, based on that, that was going to be my question, is where are our local neighbors at? But it sounds like we're really not too far behind. I understand we can't use these monies, obviously, for the budget, but where we have certain issues that we do want to address in town, you know, in looking at the accounting requirements and talking about different initiatives of housing and such. Can we take, and we've talked about this, I don't mean to meander, but we've talked about housing, we've talked about special monies, and how do we attribute more of that to our issue? Can we take any of those monies, any of the free cash monies, separate from, I guess, the trust, and figure out a way that we either have, I already, property already on the rolls, or even, it was brought up recently, we talked about different housing initiatives, could we even buy a few properties that we could turn into duplexes to at least create some housing while we continue to work on housing? I know it's kind of a scattered question and goes in different veins, but it's just where I'm going with some of this. I mean, we're accumulating a good amount of money, and that's not a bad thing, to Larry's point. I'm glad to have this problem, quote unquote, but I guess, you know, from all the information I've read, and the fact that we're not supposed to incorporate this into our budget in terms of yearly, this is money that we can do something different with and try to make a dent in what I see as housing. And again, the other part that I'm going to bring up does belong in the budget, but I'm looking at ways that we make avenues here is the early childhood education funding, you know, that would have to be a budget item. But to use that to offset something so that we can start to make some progress on our two biggest issues, which are, you know, housing and our workers. So I'm just wondering if we can better identify ways that we can use this money as a one-time thing this year to make an impact on those things while we continue to work on the trust, which is a longer period of time to make headway. That's where my thoughts are on this.
Thank you, Julie. Joe?
Thank you for that. And I will tell you, if I didn't have to take a sip of water, I was going to add one more point, but I'll lead with this, and that is, to the strategies that you're thinking of, I have to put it out there again, and it is not meant to be self-serving. It is not meant to feather my resume or anything else, but it is a fact that we should all be proud of. We have retained after pandemic and all that we went through, our AAA bond rating, you know, and that was a point of pride, certainly for me and certainly for Carol Coppola, when we did that right after town meeting this spring. And that's no small feat. Not everyone has that level, and not everyone that gets to that level keeps it. And you get that based on your sound financial practices and things like that. Now, one of the things I was able to talk about on that bond rating call is some of the actions we, the town, through town meeting, and again, I'll say it, through the leadership of the Board of Selectmen, was to create special purpose stabilization funds. So we, and those are now, or have been and will continue to be filled because of the short-term rental tax that went from four to six percent? Am I doing it right?
You're right.
Thank you. I always have to check my script with my authors. So we've already been looking at, how can we identify non-traditional, if you will, revenue sources to fund the important things? So a lot of what you've just talked about, I would say that we have ample sources to either rely upon or to go after. With the notable exception, perhaps, of, you know, early childhood education, although, you know, the school systems might be able to help us with that. But as you have a discussion next week and beyond, for me, that's why there is a reliance on extraordinary capital projects that, just the way the timing is, this was, you know, no conspiracy, if you will, to have the number come in that high, and then to have those capital projects. I think it was a confluence of, as Emery's demonstrated, what was happening in the economy and the world, and then some of our projects that we've held off for years that are coming to roost. And so for me, as it says in the DLS primer on free cash and just sound financial strategy, we should take those looks that you're talking about of what are important one-time projects, as it says in the DLS primer, and what are other revenue sources. But I want to remind everybody that we, the town of Harwich, have been doing an excellent job by creating those special purpose stabilizations for wastewater and housing. We may want to consider in the future a special purpose stabilization for capital projects, which is another recommendation that some of the better minds put out there, so that as we draw down and lower free cash, we can then perhaps get into a regular mindset of OPEB and other budget busters that we have to do. So the long-winded purpose of what I was trying to say is, we have a sound financial picture. Free cash, as we've said before, is not an indicator of bad health, on the contrary. And again, rely upon the reporting from Emery's data sources. Revenue was through the roof. I mean, if you look at that in depth, you'll see what happened, as we now know, with building permits year over year because of the pandemic and other places. And, you know, imagining 13 million in revenue and having it come in over 16 million, that's a good problem to have because we're still desirable. But, Mr. Chairman, as you and I have talked about many times, we don't want to rely upon that either. We don't want to assume that the good days will always be here. So for me, it's as we talk about the budget ongoing, as we talk about projects, we should always be very mindful of special revenue sources other than taxing the taxpayers.
Just a follow-up. So thank you, Joe, and that was a really good, extensive overview. And the only thing I'm thinking here is where we talked about, we had our extensive conversation on housing and the difficulty it is in terms of trying to create workforce housing, because we have all these stipulations that we have to meet, obviously, and there's no definition of workforce housing. And so in that, I see, you know, that's a longer haul for us as we move forward with the trust. But maybe here, where it's a special situation and we use monies to figure out a way, like I said, I don't have anything in mind, I'm just saying, if you could turn a few things into a couple of duplexes or whatever way we could go about it, it's a way we could impact workforce housing upfront and not have to worry about being tied into certain fundings and what we can do, and a quicker hit, per se. And again, everything costs more money, so not only the housing, but the materials. But if there's a way we could create some housing for workforce while we continue to work on affordable housing, I think it would be at least something we could show we were doing with free cash and trying to move that ball forward. That's all.
Thank you, Julie. Mary?
I'm struck by your suggestion, Julie, that is a good idea, if that can be worked into the formula, but I certainly feel better about our free cash position based on your and Emery's analysis. And as our senior statement says, it's not a four-letter word, so...
It's a new topic.
I'll try to make one. Well, for me, I probably look at it more, a little more simply. Joe, I appreciate your discussion. But when you look at it, we have such a large amount of free cash this year because we had very unusual last couple of years, with the ARPA funds coming in, with the school funds coming in. And so you separate that out from all the things you talk about that we have to do on the general operational budget for today and for the future, that still leaves us, well, I would call it the unusual revenue, that we could look at housing, maybe, pull that aside and see what we could do.
Thank you, Larry. Joe, you're all set. Anyone in the public?
Once again, hearing, Richard Waystack, hearing the suggestions on housing, be very, very careful, talking about buying something and creating a duplex, least expensive property... Least expensive property in Harwich tonight is $500,000. There are 23 properties in the market in Harwich right now. A lot of things that you can turn over to your housing committee, your housing trust, talking about ideas, you can do a down payment assistance program. For that one house you could buy at $500,000, you could give five $100,000 down payment subsidies. So there are a lot of programs. I just want, as people are watching and hearing this, I don't want them to think, oh, great, we're going to take all that free cash and dump it into buying some houses. Be very careful, and I think that we have enough housing committees and groups in town that we can talk about some options. I think it's a great idea at some point to do it.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else in the public? You know, one thing to keep in mind is, we were presented with capital plan, we were presented with about 5.4 million in capital projects. Is that correct, Joe?
Yep.
And the bulk of those projects were to be funded by free cash, and then there was a million to go into OPEB and a million to go into stabilization. So if we approve the capital plan and the funding, which we're going to talk about next week, we're really only looking at about 2 million.
Yeah.
Which doesn't mean we can't take any of those items that were marked to be paid as free cash and go for a debt exclusion, but I think to Selectman Howell's point last week, part of the break that we are giving the taxpayers is paying cash for these items and not borrowing. Borrowing today is more expensive than borrowing last year. One thing for the board to consider, and Don is not here tonight, is the school money that we got back. And that was one thing that Don was extremely interested in giving back, and I think two years ago, when we first learned of this and we applied for it, that was my suggestion, is to give it back to the public. Mary and I did some basic math exercises today. Divided by the amount of tax bills that go out, it's about $62 back to each taxpayer. And for me, at least, I think not borrowing again is giving the taxpayers that break. And I do believe that the department heads that have come forward in our capital needs have demonstrated that they're not a want, that they are in fact a need. We haven't been over it with a fine-tooth comb yet, but we certainly had some great presentations last week, and one being IT that we've all talked about for at least, I don't know, 12 years, 15 years, you know, and are still running extra-long extension courts to plug things in. So we do have to consider, and I am bringing back the capital plan to vote next week, hopefully vote next week, but the board should consider Don's suggestion, whether or not we want to do anything that way, or whether or not we're satisfied that we're just not going to borrow, give it back, and then borrow money again at a higher rate. And I do think it's important to note again, our AAA bond rating, as well as our very successful audits. I can remember reading audit reports six years ago, five, six years ago, and the recommendation pages were fairly extensive.
I'd rather not, Michael.
But I think we have come a long way, so. I'll go back to the public. Anyone interested in saying anything in the public? Okay? The board is all set on this topic for now. Joe, I would ask you if we could put what you presented, as well as the document that Anne Marie gave us tonight on the table, in next week's correspondence, so the public can have a copy of that as well. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to bring old business A forward, so Heinz doesn't have to sit through the whole meeting. Is that okay with the board?
Yes.
So this is approved recommended proposal from Heinz Proff, Natural Resources Director for the Sustainable Fishery Management Plan for River Herring Harvest at Herring River in Harwich. Heinz?
Hello, Board of Selectmen Chairman, Town Administrator, Heinz Proff, Natural Resources Director. I was asked just to kind of maybe summarize a little bit and then provide a recommendation to the town's current five-year fisheries management plan that was approved by the Atlantic State Marine Fisheries Commission. And I think I should begin that Harwich has had a long history of being a good steward of our run, the run being the majority Herring River herring run, but we have a couple of other smaller ones. But primarily, that's the one that gets the most attention, that's the one people think of. It's the one that we use the electronic counter. We've had counts for several years. When we began, we, meaning the Town of Harwich and Divisional Fisheries, started to see some increasing amounts of fish, the idea that we may be a town that could open our run to a certain taking of herring came about. So over two years, working with Divisional Fisheries and coming up with a plan and edits and so forth, that went forth. But while that was going on, our herring counts decreased, and I sent a memo with those last five years of numbers. So now that we've been approved to go forward if we so chose, we have five years to do so. And looking at the decreasing amounts of fish that we've gotten, that caused me a little bit of hesitation. If we had up and down numbers, up year, down year, down year, up year, then maybe, but we've had these successive decreasing amounts from a million now to 292,000 last year. I wish I had a crystal ball and I could say, well, I know what April, May are going to provide this year, but I don't. And I think it's a little bit prudent to maybe hold off, and my recommendation is not to open it this spring, and then see what we get. If we did, and we went through that process, which is a lot more than just saying, let's open it, and then we were reluctant or didn't like that, and then we closed it again, that kind of whipsaw factor, what were we thinking in doing so? We closed it in 2004. That's a lot of years ago. The state closed it in 2006. So right now, no one in the state of Massachusetts can be in the possession of herring. If a town were to open, this Divisional Fisheries would love to see several towns open, and that would then hopefully not produce a lot of pressure on one town, even if there was an opening in a town for a short period of time. Indirectly, that puts pressures on a lot of other runs, because they don't come with receipts. Someone can have a herring in their cooler, and if an environmental police officer is looking at that, or they have chunk-cut frozen herring, they got them from town, whatever they divulge they got them from, whether or not they got them there or not, there's no tracking of that. So opening up runs does come with some ingredients you have to think of. So my recommendation tonight, based upon our decreasing numbers and the electronic fish counter going in in about another month, is to see what we get in 2023. And so that's kind of what I've brought forth. If there are other thoughts or ideas or questions about the run, or, I wish I could say what has caused these decreases. These fish that spawn in mostly Long Pond, the largest freshwater body in Cape Cod, make their way back out, and for three years, they're swimming around, being exposed to all sorts of environmental conditions, predation, catch, and it's hard to kind of predict what would come back. Usually a three-year cycle from the amount of fry that we have that go out, but again, so many things can happen, water quality issue related, and all those other factors that play into what are you going to get that upcoming spring. The nice thing is, we have been a town that Divisional Fisheries has thought of working with and implemented this electronic fish counter. We have an exact count, very, very accurate. It's about $15,000 worth of equipment that we've had at our disposal and use in conjunction with them to get these numbers, and that's what went into producing that kind of proposal for a possible harvest someday. And that's kind of where we're at as of January 2023.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Start with Larry.
Thank you, Heinz.
Okay, thanks.
We'll, I mean, I certainly will go with your recommendation, but my question is, well, you've already answered one, we don't know why the quality, why the numbers are going down because of the three-year cycle. My other question is, are other herring runs in other towns being monitored as well? Are they all seeing the same trend as we're seeing here?
Yeah, so that's a good question. We weren't the only town that had this decrease amount. Two years ago, we were the second strongest in the state, and yet we had experienced a drop. So we were largest run on Cape Cod two years ago. So there are, it's the whole southeast region that is feeling that effect or decrease in numbers. And that happened again this year, too. I was surprised at our low numbers, but talking to Divisional Fisheries, they said, it's everywhere. We're not knowing, you know, why not? So it's occurred throughout the southeast region.
Thank you, Heinz.
Mary?
Thank you, Heinz. Based on the numbers before your recommendation, I wasn't too keen on opening it up just because it looks like it could present a problem. So I'm glad to have that. I did wonder for next year, though, what you thought of an idea that got thrown out last week, if we were to open it up, just doing like a ceremonial day or a ceremonial week? What would you think of that, not for this year?
Certainly within the realm of possibility, and could work that out, kind of a question and answer thing. I would be there if that's kind of what we were thinking of doing. Could allow maybe a certain limited take. If it was a day or a couple of days, you know, you can't predict, you know, you probably set these things up in advance, you don't know what the weather's going to be like that day, you don't know how strong the run when it starts off. Generally, the run is strong in April and May. Those are our two months, it trickles into July or June. So that could certainly be a good start, or a thought of, you know, getting some attention to that area and, you know, letting, it's a natural resources, the town's proud of it, it's an area that's well-maintained, not just that location, but the entire stream I clear with AmeriCorps and make sure that the whole route. It's about seven miles these fish travel from Nantucket Sound to Long Pond, if you went through all the, you know, winding back and forth in the river. But I, yeah, something where, you know, celebrate the herring, or Harwich Herring Run Day, something like that, we could put it in the paper, and certainly, you know, there are generations now that have not had that experience of taking fish out, now that it's been 20 years.
Thank you.
Julie, are there that?
Yeah, no, I mean, last week, was it last week? Yeah, we talked about it. You know, yeah, the numbers coming down were a concern, and I, again, was only in favor, too, if we were going to do a one-day or something like that, but I very much appreciate you giving us your foresight, and I would rather not do anything either, yeah, at this point, so. And the only other question I had had previous to that was, and I think you mentioned it in your writings, was that, you know, what impact that would have on town services about permits and enforcement and that kind of stuff? So I was looking at that as if it was doable, how much would you have to do to prepare for that anyway?
That's a good question. When we did have taking of herring back in 98, 99, 2000, we had volunteer wardens along with me that would be there scheduled through my department, when they would oversee the run. People would still dip net, but they would be limited, either six or 12 or certain days of the week, they would go into resident, non-resident kind of thing. But then, when it's closed or at night, there's still some responsibility that I've had there, and make sure that that location is certainly one spot. That means the whole river has to be protected, and poaching can occur 24 hours, seven days a week, so it does involve some good planning and management.
Yeah.
Thank you, Heinz. Joe, any questions or comments?
Just a comment, I want to thank Heinz for the quick turnaround. You know, last week was a short week, we were able to connect later in the week, and I want to put it out there. The question I posed to Heinz is, the board wants to know what, if anything, what do you think we should do in fiscal year, excuse me, in calendar year 2023 related to herring? He said absolutely nothing, so I said, I need you to turn that into a two-paragraph memo, which he did, and then spoke very well, as we always expect him to do so, so. Thanks, Heinz, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, very much. Okay, back up, can I get a motion on B?
I move that we vote to approve the temporary closure of Brax Restaurant Management, Inc., DBA Brax Landing, 705 Route 28.
Moved in second. Any discussion? My only comment is one I made last week.
Right, I was hearing it.
These letters are supposed to be to request closure, not inform us that they are closed. So if we just pass that message along, that our regulations state they're asking for permission to close. I don't ever recall denying one, but we should probably follow the letter of our regulations. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Motion on C?
I move that we vote to approve the 2023 Common Vicular's License Renewal for Shogun, Inc., DBA Noble House 21, Route 28.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Motion on D?
I move that we vote to approve the 2023 Class 1 Auto License Renewal for Harwich Port Boatyard, 4 Harbor Road.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Motion on E?
I move that we vote to approve the following 2023 New Annual License Applications for Round Cove Resort Owner LLC, DBA Wequasit Inn, 2173 Route 28. The Common Viculars, Inholders, Weekly Entertainment, noon to 12 midnight inside, and noon until 10:00 PM outside. Live recorded music, amplification, dancing by patrons and live performers. Sunday entertainment, noon to midnight inside and noon to 10:00 PM outside. Live recorded music, amplification, dancing by patrons and live performers.
Not Lice.
No Lice will be performing.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? The only note is, we did get an internal memo, there is no change to the entertainment license whatsoever from last year to this year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Back into old business, vote to amend Board of Selectmen remote participation policy. This was an old topic that had come up once before. Mary, I believe it was you that made the comments, so I'm just putting things back on the agenda. We don't have to take an action, but if you have any suggestions?
I do. The primary is number six in the policy, that members are allowed to participate remotely up to three times per calendar year, and if it's longer than three times, the Board of Selectmen must vote to grant some extension. And I just think that's something that doesn't need to come to this table. I think we could make that, the chair of the committee can approve that. The other thing in talking to Danielle, back at number two, we probably want to update who needs to be notified. It's both Channel 18 and our IT director, and what I would suggest is that Danielle get the language that those two directors want. 24 hours doesn't seem like a lot, maybe it should be 48 unless there's, you know, an emergency. So that would be my proposal, to get rid of the Board of Selectmen voting on it, and to just make cleanup number two in terms of technology.
Thank you, Mary. Larry comments on the whole document, and Mary's to propose changes.
Mary's comments make sense to me, I would support that.
Julie?
Yeah, the same. I don't have any additional comments, I think you're right.
Nothing else? Joe, can we work on those two items, and then we have to have a public hearing on this? And advertise the public hearing?
Yep, so we'll get content, draft content together, and then tie that to the hearing.
Thank you. Update from the Town Administrator on various proposed zoning amendment articles for 2023 annual town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know that I said this earlier, but good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and everyone assembled. So relative to a number of zoning, potential zoning bylaw amendments, or zoning bylaw ads, when these topics were first brought up in the fall of '22, I did meet with our primary attorney from KP Law on land matters, Amy Questle. So she's been fully briefed, she's now working directly with our Director of Planning and Community Development, Paul Helkiotis, to get material together. So there's quite a bit of process when it comes to zoning board amendments, whereby the planning board has to be mindful of dates, the Board of Selectmen may have things referred back to then refer for a hearing, so that Amy and Paul are going to be working on all of those, as it would then go to our town clerk if they were adopted at town meeting, to make sure that we pass all of the regulatory requirements separate from content. Content itself, I'll be meeting with Paul later this week to get a sense of where he's at on some of those, and what he thinks we can might, what we might start getting in front of the board as draft articles to start that process. So the topics that we are generally aware of, you know, when we talk about zoning bylaw amendments, we're talking about trying to restructure the ADU bylaw, and I know there was a question of the 40,000 square foot rule. Anything that we can bear upon that article, excuse me, that section of zoning to really assist in the affordable housing effort, lowercase a, lowercase h, affordable is, you know, whatever we determine in that case. Also, what I'm referring to as solar panel-related devices. So we know, in my inelegance words, the solar tracker, almost like a windmill kind of a device, and others that have been cropping up in other towns, so that's at the forefront of what they're looking to do. And then the multi-lettered word that comes across as a four-letter word, density. And so to, you know, to really take another look at that, and so the list that you folks And so the list that you folks gave me back in November was transmitted to council, and now those appropriate staff members are working on it.
Thank you. Mary, this was on your master list of things we haven't finished. And Julie, you had requested this to me as a topic. So I'll start with Mary. Does that cover your thoughts?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good, the only other one, Joe, you and I had picked this up at one of those housing webinars we went to. I know we were on the computer or when we were up in Hyannis. They talked about some specific zoning, you know, to take, maybe it's under your density thing, that you take a, a district and make the zoning so that you can have a smaller amount of square footage. Is that, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, and, and yes, it is what it was meant by density. Correct. And it was, if I remember correctly, an offshoot from the Housing Assistance Corporation event late November, I think, at the Cape Codder. So that is, that is on that list.
That's a piece of that, okay.
Julie?
No, all of those items are exactly, you know, the different things we've talked about. I think hopefully we can at least, I mean, I know the other, we've got public hearings and stuff involved, but I'm hoping that at least we can get that A.D.U., you know, cleaned up because I think if we can get that cleaned up well and quickly, we at least know that's going forward. Hopefully, we don't get, you know, trouble with other ones that require more public hearing.
Sure. And if I could, Mr. Chairman, to that one, Attorney Questle, given her work at K.P. Law and how many they've done across Commonwealth, I think had a very fast understanding and comfort level. So it's something that Paul and I haven't discussed yet. So I'm sure with his background and as strong as it is, he might have a similar mindset as well.
Right.
So we should be able to come to bear on something significant for that, for this election season. Excuse me, before I didn't slip, town meeting season.
Thank you. Larry, where I came from?
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Joe, for the list. I, I appreciate the list. If I'm reading the newspapers correctly, the governor and the last, several months ago, was trying to move from seventy-five percent voting for zoning changes to fifty percent. Is that part of the discussion as well?
So I, seventy-five to what?
To fifty percent, majority vote.
So my understanding is what Governor, then Governor Brak had accomplished is, it's a very narrow change whereby certain criteria and standards have to be met, where it is a straight majority rather than the two-thirds majority. I can do more research because I know MMA, our association, was keenly interested in that. My sense was, when I first heard of it several years ago, when it was first talked of, it was a big deal. What was accomplished by law, I don't think was as big a deal as what was originally mentioned. So I think it's, it was along the lines of more benign zoning issues of a certain nature only require straight majority, but most of it will still require two-thirds. But I'll have information.
Could you clarify that?
Yep.
My other comment is, is I'd like to look at the timeline because any time you mention zoning at all, it becomes a very lengthy discussion. So we need to get out in front of this and it's A.D.U. or, you know, all this as soon as we can.
Agreed. Mary?
Because the hope is to have this at May's town meeting.
Correct, exactly. Yep.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on First Contract A?
Sure. I move we vote to authorize the Chair to execute the recycling dividend program contract between the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection in town of Harwich. The grant is in the amount of twelve thousand, one hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Well, I'd be remiss to say, every, every grant this is, is welcome.
Motion on B?
Okay, I vote to authorize the Chair to execute the Winter Recovery Assistance Program contract between the Massachusetts Department of Transportation in town of Harwich.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Joe, will you do an update on C?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in your packets, you should have a copy of the S.J. Service Incorporated Agreement. And so this relates to a topic discussion that I know Selectman Anderson was aware of or interested in and have been getting some constituent feedback on. So the question comes as to availability of the various comfort stations, AKA restrooms around town, as related to our beaches. So if we are going to expand, so this contract expired, I believe, in the fall. Yeah, the time of performance ended on October eleventh, which ties to the long weekend in October. So within this contract, just trying to find it, there was specifics on performance standards. So I think it's under Attachment A of that. So it's talking about the timeframe, so the two thousand and twenty-two beach season. And that was, they would start around Memorial Day and run through the Columbus Day Indigenous Peoples Weekend. That there were, I think, time standards and scheduling. So if we were to expand upon any of that, we would want to incorporate that in the new scope of services, but we would also want to imagine that we'd have to pay more. And so when Selectman Anderson had asked me what could be done, I said, it's simply spending more money and doing another contract. So it really is simply a statement of what do we want to do beyond this contract? The, the expansion of those services shouldn't be extraordinary, AKA shouldn't be a budget buster, but to do anything would require a change in services.
Mary?
Yeah, the, my original call to Joe was after Fourth of July weekend because my understanding is the night of Fourth of July, it was a complete disaster. The bathrooms were closed and people just chose other options. I'll just leave it at that. So I'm wondering if we could add in here that Fourth of July, the bathrooms are kept open. I think in the past, they were open later than eight o'clock. I don't know whether they hit, and it says that they start the closing at six and they're supposed to end at the community center downtown. Maybe we get them on the Fourth of July to extend to, till ten and they do Red River at ten. That was my original only goal here. But shortly after that, a woman had an article in the Cape Cod Times that talked about Cape Cod being a bathroom desert. And it was a pretty entertaining but pointed article that made me wonder if we should be open longer. And I don't know how much money it would be, but maybe back up to mid-April. I mean, we're really bragging a lot about the shoulder season. So maybe April fifteenth to November one to get a little more of the, and maybe not all of the restrooms, but maybe pick and choose the ones that we think would be certainly the chamber. So that was my idea.
Yep, so thank you. And I found, I think, really the section that gets to most of what you were just talking about, Mary, within the documents. If you can see Exhibit One, General Conditions and Provisions. So, you know, it identifies all of the locations. It identifies the standards, the frequencies, the timing and all that. So my point is simply, I can work with staff to go over this and modify the scope of services. So we'll go back out. We would, this would be around the time we'd start to do it anyway in anticipation of the funding sources coming at town meeting. So we would just want to update the scope of services, get it out there to the marketplace, and that's how we accomplish it.
Larry, you good with that?
I am. I would think that if you polled the Rec Department, D.P.W., that they could get a good sense of what Mary's talking about. Because maybe, you know, our beaches stay open much later than six, maybe bathrooms should be open a couple of hours, maybe six is too early. Yeah, she's, I, I think as much feedback we can get from those that are involved would be good.
Julie?
I agree. I mean, we should get the feedback from the necessary departments, but it's true. I mean, people are at the beach later than six o'clock, so we just voted to close them at, what, ten?
Right.
So.
Joe, this, this service started with the pandemic. What changed in the D.P.W. that we're not going back to doing it ourselves? Are we still struggling to find?
That was cer, that was certainly the case, I think, you know, because just sort of deconstructing this contract and the manner in which it was created. You know, we typically would, we in procurement would want to go fiscal year and fiscal year. So we would have wanted to have done something that would have been for a period of time, the end of the fiscal year, and then another one starting for the next season and the next quarter of the new fiscal year. So if memory serves correctly, you're absolutely right. At first, it started where, you know, cleaning was a premium and getting someone to do it was even more so. Then as we started to transition away from the urgent need of it, it was a staffing issue. Having said that, I will knock on court board and call it wooden, say, we've had better success in hiring folks. So this is a conversation, as, as Larry suggested, that I would have with D.P.W., Rec, and certainly procurement to say, how can we accomplish this between RFP contract and operations?
And really, if you could break it down to us, because we don't, we're not looking to reduce our custodians.
Correct.
But we are looking to continue an additional service that was brought in due to the pandemic and what you distract.
Right.
And I would also think that these contracts would be less money now that the pandemic rush in every town is over. So we would go back out for a new, with a new RFP and hoping that these numbers would go down.
As we say in procurement, your lips to God's ears.
Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some welcome news of new hires. I know last week there was a, an excellent presentation of those folks that more often than not had retired in calendar year twenty-two. So it's nice to start off calendar year twenty-three with some announcements of staff hirings. And let me just get them all out here. And I'm going to tell you that one of them, I've already been informed, I will misstate the last name. So she has given me permission to simply refer to her by her original name, that is to say, her maiden name, if we call it that anymore. And that would be Marissa Stone, who has joined Emily Mitchell's office as our executive assistant. Marissa comes to us with a strong background, started today and has already joined the spirits that are in the clerk's office like we're seeing now. Just great smiling faces and very competent people doing great work. So we're thrilled to have Marissa join us. And there, I almost called the Melissa, and I promised her I would never do that. In addition, we have Sean Forbes. I think I announced that last week, but I'm going to say that Mr. Forbes started last week in our D.P.W. department as a maintenance manager. We have Lori Rolls, who is a program aide in the community center. And we have Phyllis Cudmore, a program specialist, too, in, in the recreation department. So again, certainly a robust report last week of some staff members that either departed for, for better options for them or in many cases retired. But I'm thrilled to report that we continue to have a great hot streak on hiring, with the notable exception remaining Town Engineer. It becomes, it is my white whale, but we, we remain undaunted and we still look. And then the only other thing, Mr. Chairman, just a reminder, your meeting next week will be Tuesday, the seventeenth. And I know that we do have some public input events that are related to D.P.W. We were looking to do a seven P. M. start. However, there were items that were already noticed at six P. M. So unfortunately, we do have to start by the six P. M. And I do think we also might have some collective, collective bargaining matters. So the two items that we were talking about, one of them is the sidewalk input. It is something that folks can do either in person or remote, but we can also do commentary. So I know we were trying to accommodate schedules to get board members there. Not to say that board members couldn't go, but your meeting is scheduled next Tuesday, the seventeenth, at six P. M. Thank you.
Selectman's report, Julie?
The only thing I'd like to say is that I took a lovely walk today on the Coldbrook Conservation Trail, and it was beautiful.
Larry?
Nothing.
Larry?
Nothing.
My only comment goes back to the start of this meeting, public comments and announcement, and that would be the vacancy list. And one extremely important vacancy right now is voter information committee. We have been blessed with a great voter information committee, and due to some retirements in that committee, we don't have one. And we have elections coming up, we have budgets coming up, and we need to repopulate that. So if anyone knows anyone that wants to volunteer for that committee, that's an extremely important committee. What's that, Richard?
Why are you looking at me?
Well. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.